Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Planning Board for July 23, 2009. We have one item on the agenda, which is a public hearing, and I will now read it in. A public hearing is convened to solicit public comment on the draft revised zoning ordinance dated June 11, 2009, and the draft revised site plan review regulations dated April 24, 2008. Copies of these documents are available for public inspection in the Planning Department, the Public Library, and on the city's website, which is www.cityofportsmith.com. Tonight is the second of, I believe, four public hearings on soliciting public comment on the zoning ordinance and revised site plan review reg. So we've got about a 45-minute presentation, and then we'll open it up to any public comment. So with that, I will now turn it over to the Planning Director, Rick Tinter.
Thank you. Before beginning, I'd just like to let everybody know that we have a webpage for the zoning ordinance revision process and project here, and I passed out to the Planning Board members a printout of the webpage, but it's basically on the city website. You go to the "What's New?" section on the front page of the website and click on "Draft Revised Zoning Ordinance." It will take you to a page that gives a summary, gives you links to download the various ordinances and regulations that we'll be talking about, and talks about the four different ways that you can comment on this. First is attending a public hearing such as this one. Second, you can mail comments to the Planning Department. Third, there's a phone number for you to call. And fourth, there's actually an online form so you can submit comments right online at the website. So that is the -- those are the various ways you can do that. As the Chair said, I will be just doing a presentation that is going to cover the background of the process and some of the key changes that are being contemplated, and that should take about 45 minutes, and then we will move into the comment section of the public hearing. So the -- this presentation is going to cover the context and background of this revision process, project, the process that we went through to do the revisions to the zoning ordinance, an overview of some of the changes, some of the big -- focusing on some of the big changes, look at some of the possible changes in the zoning map, zoning district boundaries, a little bit of discussion about some of the revisions to the site review regulations, and then an open it up for discussion. And just to begin with, wanted to put this all in context, that the zoning ordinance that we're looking at as part of this project, this revision project, is one of many sets of statutes and regulations that affect land use and development. There are various federal laws with which the city must comply, First Amendment controls, sign regulations, among other things. There are telecommunications laws that override local zoning. There are stormwater regulations that affect land use. There are state laws that define what the city can do in terms of zoning subdivision, site review, and building codes. The city has a master plan that outlines the goals and objectives, and that led into some of the changes in the zoning ordinance. And there are various other city ordinances that deal with how -- what boards do in the city, and with water, sewer, stormwater, noise, and so forth. So the zoning ordinance is the most direct one that affects land use and development, but there are many others that affect that in other ways. Then the other part of the context is the context of the boards that are involved. The City Council is sort of the start of the whole process. That's the body that adopts ordinances such as the zoning ordinance. It grants easements over public property and licenses, which are for temporary use of public property. Once the ordinance has been adopted, there are three principal boards that are involved in administering the ordinance. The Planning Board deals with subdivision site review, conditional uses, looks at what uses are allowed, and reviews specific development proposals. The Conservation Commission gets involved when wetlands are -- primarily when wetlands are involved, and they have to advise the Planning Board on conditional use permits. And the Historic District Commission obviously gets involved when something is in the historic district and affects historic properties. And then the last board on the list is the Board of Adjustment, and that's somewhat different because it has a role under the zoning ordinance in terms of evaluating applications for special exceptions, but it also has a role that's somewhat outside the zoning ordinance in that it evaluates appeals from decisions of code officials, and it also looks at appeal or requests for change for variances, basically to -- for somebody to be exempted from particular rules of the zoning ordinance. So while the Planning Board, Conservation Commission, and Historic District Commission mostly apply the rules of the zoning ordinance and other land use regulations, the Board of Adjustment is very much involved in overturning, in a sense, aspects of the zoning ordinance in particular cases. Then another thing that's important to look at is the difference between the zoning ordinance and the site plan review regulations. The zoning ordinance, as I said, is adopted by the City Council. It looks at -- it divides the city into districts within which certain regulations apply, and in those districts, it defines which uses are permitted, which uses require a special exception from the Board of Adjustment, which might require a conditional use permit, and which are prohibited in all cases. And it sets dimensional and intensity standards, other standards for development of the sites such as parking regulations and so forth, and it has sign standards, which is somewhat different from the other ones. It's not quite a land use regulation as much as it is a design standard. In terms of the site review regulations, those are not adopted by the Council, they're actually adopted by the Planning Board, and they are what comes into play with a multifamily use or a commercial use, and it looks at the site-specific issues. When a use comes in, it's been determined to be acceptable under zoning, this is where the Board looks at site issues that are specific to the site, traffic impacts, screening, landscaping, noise, stormwater impacts on adjoining properties, snow removal, and so forth. So it's really applying the -- taking it from the general regulations of the zoning ordinance and applying it to the individual site. This is the zoning map. As I mentioned, one of the fundamental concepts under zoning is dividing a community into different districts, and within each district, certain rules apply, and this is the city's zoning map. It also -- there are different types of districts. There are districts that are -- that cover the entire city in some way, and I guess in other words, the city is divided, the entire city is divided into districts, but there are also overlay districts which apply only in certain areas. So for example, the historic district only applies in the historic center of town. Flood hazard -- flood districts apply only along the coast and rivers and streams. We have a downtown overlay district that applies in the downtown that is meant to protect first-floor uses for commercial uses, and there are various other overlay districts as well. The next aspect of zoning, once the city has been divided into districts, is to determine which uses are permitted in all cases, permitted in certain cases, by special exception or conditional use permit, or prohibited. And that is done through a table of use regulations, and in this case, it's done through a table of use regulations, and basically in this table, you have zoning -- the zoning districts are across the top of the table, and the uses are down the side, and it tells you whether something is -- it says P for permitted, S for special exception, CU for conditional use permit, or N for prohibited. And then there's also, in this draft zoning ordinance, something new is a separate column, and there's nothing in the column on this particular page, but there are cross-references to particular sections of the zoning ordinance that tell you where there are some additional regulations that might apply to that particular use. And then the other part of a district regulation, the sort of fundamental district regulations, there's uses, and then there's intensity, or sometimes called area regulations in New Hampshire, but these are the ones that determine how far a building has to be set back from a lot line, how much of the lot a building can cover, what intensity of development there is, and oftentimes illustrations such as this are used to explain those regulations. Site plan review, as I mentioned, is when you get right down to the specific site and look at how these various regulations play out in reality. So in this case, we have a retail shopping center. The zoning tells you how many parking spaces you need to have, and it tells you what kind of landscaping and setbacks and so forth you need, but the site plan review really gets into looking at how landscaping works, how buffering works, how you protect the wetlands, how you provide safe access, and so forth. The background of this zoning study really begins with the 2005 master plan, which was a very thorough planning process and involved many residents in a series of public meetings. It developed, defined four general areas of priority, continuing the vitality of the downtown, improving some of the corridors coming into the downtown area, supporting diversity in the community, and protecting resources and promoting environmental sustainability. And so those priorities are defined, there are goals, objectives, and then there are very specific implementation strategies, many of which were related to changes in zoning. The last major revision of the city's zoning ordinance was back in 1995. Since then, there have been incremental revisions over time, and many of those revisions have responded to very specific cases that have come up, something that was unforeseen came up, and so a new provision in the zoning was written to address that, and so there have been layers of changes over time, which has made the ordinance fairly complicated. Also, there have been new federal and state laws. The Telecommunications Act of 1996 came in, that's the one that regulates cell towers and overrides local zoning, prohibits communities from being too restrictive with respect to cellular communications. The state last year adopted two new laws, these are just a couple of examples. They adopted a small wind energy systems law in June of 2008, it became effective in June of 2000 -- oh, sorry, July of 2008, and became effective in July of 2009, and that is for relating to wind turbines. And it also adopted a workforce housing law that talks about how communities have to make adequate provision for workforce housing. And then some of the more recent changes that have been made locally include, as I mentioned earlier, the development of a downtown overlay district in 2004, and then a couple of years ago, the adoption of a provision that was meant to promote workforce housing. It's called the, for short, RDI-PUD, that's the Residential Density Incentive Planned Unit Development. And then there were some changes in the Central Business A District regarding height and design standards that were also made in 2007. So the process of doing this zoning ordinance revision really began in April of 2006, or in early 2006, and there was an audit of the zoning ordinance that was completed in the fall of 2006. I basically went through the ordinance and identified some areas where changes needed to be made, and some recommendations for changes just to improve the ordinance. We've had a number of meetings over the past three years, 45 work sessions with the Planning Board, eight meetings and work sessions with the City Council, a dozen meetings with other municipal boards, including the Historic District Commission, the Conservation Commission, the Sustainability Committee, and the Blue Ribbon Committee, Commission of Housing. And then during that process, the normal activity of zoning has gone on, so the City Council has referred to the Planning Board a number of proposals for zoning changes, some of which were adopted and some of which weren't. The Planning Board has a responsibility to review anything that's referred to it by the City Council with respect to zoning and to make a recommendation. And a couple of these items that I mentioned earlier were adopted, the RDI-PUD district that was for affordable housing, and the changes in the building heights and design standards in the Central Business A District. A couple others were not adopted. One was restrictions on formula businesses, chain stores in the downtown area, and a non-residential planned unit development that was proposed. The Planning Board also, while we were doing the zoning, also revised, reviewed and revised the site plan regulations and came to a final draft in April of 2008. However, those are, because of the interrelationships between the site plan regulations and the zoning ordinance, the decision was made to hold off on adopting those regulations until we knew what the final zoning revisions would be. And we completed a draft for public review of the zoning ordinance in June of 2009, and that's where we are at this point. Some key objectives of the zoning revision, one theme that has become very important in the city as across the nation over the past few years is that of promoting environmental sustainability, and we've tried to include those considerations in the zoning ordinance and the site review regulations as much as we've been able to. We wanted to balance flexibility with predictability. There's a need to have predictability in the ordinance so that a property owner knows what is -- what can and cannot be done with a property, but there's also a need sometimes to be a little bit more flexible, and so we've tried to include some provisions in this that make it less of a straitjacket in some cases and provide more flexibility that achieves the same objectives as the original regulation. We also wanted to balance resource protection with private property rights and with economic development. We wanted to use common sense. There are a lot of things that when we looked at the regulation, we really didn't understand it, and we just tried to figure out what the common sense approach would be, and also tried to make it easier to understand and more user-friendly. And this is one of the things that we really try to avoid, is the subdivision project was abandoned because no one could read the local zoning regulations. Sometimes even to those who work with them a lot, it's very difficult to interpret things, and so we want to make sure that this was something that could easily be read, or as easily as possible be read by anyone coming to it. And to begin with, we really, we started by taking the whole ordinance apart and putting it back together in a different structure. We renumbered the sections in the existing ordinance. Sometimes you have to turn back five pages to find out what section reference you're in, and we wanted to have it so that you could always find out where you were. So we used a different section numbering system. We use tables wherever possible to make it easier to understand. Many times, regulations are buried in paragraphs, and we wanted to make it as easy to understand as possible. So tables help with things like distances between uses and lots and so forth, and hours of operation. Those things were in paragraph form in the current ordinance, and we wanted to break them out and make them easier to find. We added many definitions. We totally, we probably increased the number of defined terms by a factor of seven or eight or 10, and we highlighted those defined terms in the text, so when you see a dark, bold font in the text, you'll know that it's a term you can turn to the back and find out what it's supposed to mean according to this ordinance. And we've used the page layout to try to help you find your way through it, so there's more use of indents and white space and so forth. The ordinance seems longer in some ways than it is because it uses more of that formatting to space out the text, but actually, it's probably about the same length as the current ordinance in terms of words. The structure of the ordinance, a very basic thing, it's not -- it's meant to be something you can easily find your way through. We actually begin with some things that are at the end of the current ordinance, some things about administration and non-conforming lots and so forth. Chapters four and five are the core, the use regulations, the dimensional and intensity standards. A chapter where we group all of the overlay districts together because they were kind of spread out throughout the ordinance before. A chapter on flexible development, some supplemental use standards, these are the ones that I mentioned primarily, they're in that right-hand column of the use table. Some special uses such as cell towers and the wind turbines and some other things. Environmental protection standards, site development standards, including parking and loading and landscaping, signs, performance standards and impact fees for the small sections, and then the long-definition chapter. In terms of sustainability, we've tried to emphasize low-impact development, which is development that tries to manage stormwater on-site rather than having stormwater flow off-site and affect other properties. There's a section, a nationwide standard called Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design, which is just what it sounds like. It's a rating system for buildings, and we've incorporated that into the ordinance in a couple of places. We've addressed impervious surface by, in addition to having maximum coverage and minimum open space, which are provisions in the current ordinance, we've also made provision for reserved parking areas. So if a commercial development comes in and doesn't feel that it has to, that it is going to generate the amount of parking demand that the ordinance says it's going to generate, it can keep that area in reserve, landscape it, increase the landscaping, and just provide enough area so that if those parking spaces are needed in the future, they can be used. It's just a way to cut down an unneeded paving, and then allowing for shared parking where different uses are complementary. The wetlands protection regulations have been strengthened. Site plan review takes into account some low-impact development and dark-skY-friendly provisions, and we also have just very simple things such as rain barrels. Promoting rain barrels is a very simple thing in the in-site review. It doesn't have to be very complicated to be part of the sustainability objectives. Couple of examples of how master plan goals, goals from the 2005 master plan got translated into the zoning ordinance. One of the goals was protect neighborhood character, and one of the issues that came up was residential conversions, where large residences are converted into multifamily dwellings. That's still a goal. It's a way to protect those historic structures from being replaced, but there was a need to kind of control the expansion, the additions onto those, so there were some changes made to that section. Improving commercial corridors, one of the things I'll talk about later on, is a proposed gateway district and a concept called gateway plan development, which would replace a lot of the commercial zoning along Lafayette Road. Protecting natural resources is a goal, and we, there was expansion of the areas that are, would be under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission and conditional use permit for wetlands, and also strengthened management of the buffer areas around wetlands. And then protecting and enhancing community character, and one of the examples of the way we did that was to strengthen sign regulations and to create some signed districts that are different from the regular zoning districts. Some details that are in the revised ordinance, required open spaces, each district has a percentage of a lot that has to be open space, and in some cases, when you have a very small percentage, that required open space essentially becomes meaningless, and so you get these very narrow strips of open space that are not usable and many times not visible. So one of the things that we're proposing in the revised ordinance is to have a minimum standard for how big that open space has to be, and then to complement that by totally removing the requirement for open space in the Central Business District, because that's an area where there's currently a 5% standard, and it's really, it really doesn't give you anything at all. So it was felt that it was a question of the balance between environmental protection and common sense. We have a provision that's called a front yard exception, which gives some flexibility, another example between flexibility and predictability. Oftentimes, in the city, there are neighborhoods that are zoned with a fairly substantial front yard setback, but there are clusters of houses in those neighborhoods that predate the zoning that have a much smaller setback, so the setback may be, required setback may be 30 feet, but all the houses on the street are 20 feet back from the street. Well, this is, we have a provision in the ordinance that allows you to average the existing setbacks and make that the new setback where it's less than the required minimum in the ordinance. In terms of off-street parking, I mentioned the reserved parking area before. We're also, for large developments, have a provision for a maximum number of spaces. In other words, you can't, if there's a minimum, but there's a percentage over that that becomes the maximum, so you don't pave the entire lot. And we're proposing a regulation to require off-street parking spaces to not be in front of the building, between the building and the street, but to bring the buildings closer to the street and have parking beside or behind buildings. We've tried to rationalize the off-street loading. The current ordinance seemed to have too many loading facilities, truck offloading facilities for some larger commercial uses, and especially for office buildings, so we've tried to look at, tried to refine those regulations and make them more meaningful, more appropriate. And we've drafted some regulations for drive-through uses to protect neighbors and to enhance traffic safety and pedestrian safety. In terms of resource protection and sustainability, one of the things that we're proposing is to reduce the minimum area for wetlands jurisdiction from a half-an-acre, which is roughly 20,000 square feet, 21,000 square feet, down to 10,000 square feet, which is closer. So we're basically cutting the jurisdictional area in half, and that may seem like a dramatic change. It's actually, it's probably larger than what wetlands experts would recommend, but it's kind of a compromise again between sustainability and property protections. But the, on this plan, it's actually, it gives you a sense, it's not gives you a sense of the impact. These green areas, these large green areas are the areas that are currently subject to wetlands regulations. These are the areas that include the buffer areas around half-acre wetlands. And then the blue spots are the additional areas that would be included by including the 10,000 square foot, 10,000 to half-acre wetlands in the jurisdiction. So while it's addressing an important environmental issue, its impact on the, in the total city is less than it might appear by the amount of the cut. The other thing is including vernal pools, which are vital for amphibians, and including them in the coverage. And mapping those, mapping the identified vernal pools, these are shown in red on this map, so there are a couple here, and there are a couple in this area. You don't see them very many other places, another one in here, and that's because most of those are already within the areas that are covered by the wetlands regulations, but because those are such environmentally sensitive areas, it was felt important to include them. And this is an area where we're talking to the Conservation Commission, gave input into the changes in the zoning. There are tidal wetlands around North Mill Pond and South Mill Pond. Among the changes in the regulations are to include what are called best management practices for stormwater and to look at vegetation management in the buffer area. So as well as being a buffer area around the wetlands, the closest portion of that buffer area to the wetland is a limited-cut area, and there's also a vegetated buffer strip within that. So these are ways to additionally protect stormwater that flows into the wetlands and might degrade it. Other resource protection and sustainability initiatives in the ordinance, I mentioned reducing impervious surfaces, we're adding pedestrian and bicycle circulation and bike parking standards in some areas, promoting dark-sky-friendly outdoor lighting, enhancing the landscaping and screening standards, and strengthening the water resource protection standards in the site review regulations. Now, I mentioned briefly the gateway district. It's one of the things that we're doing to try to promote enhancement of the corridor on Lafayette Road from the Rye Town Line up to the Route 1 bypass, and this is a concept that while it's applied right to that area right now, might be applied to other areas as well. This is a blow-up of the zoning map, showing the existing zoning on the left and the proposed zoning on the right, and starting down here, this is the Rye Town Line. This is Route 1 coming up here to the bypass going up this way. This is the, this purple area is the industrial park. Right now, much of Route 1 is zoned for general business, which is this brown color, and the area right up here, Fresh Market up in this area, here's Sagamore Creek crossing here. Creek crossing here and the Urban Forestry Center in green. What is being proposed is to replace that general business and office research and some other smaller business districts with a new district that's called the Gateway District. And that would go, be a continuous district all the way up, not expanding into the residential areas, not changing areas that are not currently commercial, but creating a consistent zoning for that corridor. And, and the way this relates to the master plans, the master plan talked about as one of the goals, redeveloping commercial areas in a manner comparable with the quality of site and building design that has occurred in the downtown core area. Then under that goal was an objective for encouraging high-quality mixed-use redevelopment along major corridors. And then there was an implementation strategy that says, review the zoning regulation in designated business districts and corridors, and revise to promote improvements in the streetscape, including the placement, including encouraging the placement of parking areas behind or beside buildings rather than between buildings and the street. And the objectives of this new district are to encourage mixed-use development, to add residential uses to the existing commercial development, to enhance the character of the commercial, of the corridor development, to expand moderate-cost housing opportunities by, by allowing residential development to be mixed in, to incorporate pedestrian, bicycle access and circulation, and to use the existing transportation infrastructure efficiently. It's, it's a major road, rather than spreading out development, it would help to use that, use land uses right along the road a little bit more, in a more concentrated fashion to be more efficient. And one of the things that we, we looked at was how other communities have looked at evolution of an area over time. And one of the things you look at when you look at a corridor is, you see it's already built out, and many people don't, don't, don't see the possibilities for, for changing the character. And zoning can really help, a combination of zoning and non-zoning techniques. You have to have public investment, obviously, you definitely need private investment, but zoning can set the, the framework for that. And this is a, a series of visualizations of a, of a corridor in Illinois showing how something could change over time. So this is the existing condition, it's not too much different from portions of Lafayette Road right now. It's a, a four-lane cross-section with very limited sidewalks, very low-density development, not much above one-story. The easiest thing you can do in a picture, though not obviously the most, the easiest thing you can do as a community, is to take out the overhead wires. And that is a very expensive thing to do, but a very easy thing to do in the, in the visualization. But you start thinking about over time, seeing how landscaping might be added to soften the edge of the streetscape, and even do some, some very simple things with, with pedestrian crossings, some landscaping at corners, just to shield the area and just to make it a little bit more attractive. But then you really need to have zoning to, to allow a different type of development to occur. In this case, you see a, a, a single-story development, a very suburban type of development turning into something that's more like the kind of development that is characteristic of Portsmouth Downtown with a, a higher density, mix of uses, upper and lower floors and so forth. And then doing, doing that down the corridor, so looking, having that develop and move down the corridor, which by letting your zoning regulations allow those things to happen. And then you have things like making, making provision for transit and so forth. And over time, you can get something that's actually a more pedestrian-friendly, walkable kind of place. One of the, one of the models in New England for this is a place called Mashpee Commons down on Cape Cod. It's an old supermarket, side and old, a little shopping center site at the intersection of a rotary of two state roads, there's a state road along this side and a state road down here. And the, the developer came in and convinced the town to, to do something different than it was currently being done with zoning and to allow some infill and to actually create a little town center. And so what started out as this, the shopping center became this over time. And it's basically taking a, a, a flat sea of parking and making it a more walkable area. And so this is all part of that town center. This used to be a, a traditional suburban shopping center. So, so you can see with the right type, type of zoning, you can encourage the right type of development to occur. And it, it requires an increase in density, but that increase in density can actually make it a more attractive place. So this is the, the, again, the gateway district going from, from the Rye Town Line. Here we have Walmart and South Gate Plaza and Water Country and Market Basket and the old Yelkins up to the bypass. So it's, there's some fairly significant sites. We have the Walmart site and the former Yelkin site, and there's just plenty of room for, for redevelopment over time. What you see there is not what, what is going to happen in the future, and if we have the right zoning in place, we can encourage the right kind of development to occur. So the basic concept is to, to create this gateway district and to change some of the underlying regulations. So we begin with the use regulations and the dimensional standards that are based on the general business district, but we reduce the minimum front lot, front yard requirement. Right now, there's a 105-foot setback requirement along most of Lafayette Road, which was designed to make provision for an eventual widening of the road. Well, the, the state has, has come pretty close to determining a preferred alignment, which is a 92-foot wide right-of-way. And we have a fairly good sense of, of what that, where that's going to be. And so what we've proposed is instead of having a, a 105-foot setback, we're proposing something in the order of a 20-to-30-foot setback. So that immediately gives much more flexibility to the district, allowing buildings to come much closer. And we're also proposing a maximum front yard, so the buildings can't be more than 30 feet back from the, from the sideline. And the idea behind there is to, to do it was shown in those earlier pictures, to bring buildings closer to the street and to have parking behind, so it's a more pedestrian-friendly and actually just a more aesthetically friendly place and a higher quality of development. Then on top of that, there's, so that's the, the underlying aspect of the gateway district. And then on top of that, we have something called a gateway plan development, which would be a use that would be allowed as a conditional use. It would be an optional use, a landowner would not have to do it. But what that does is if, it allows through a master planning to, to get more flexibility in the site, further reduction of front yard, there's incentive for, incentive for better design with, if the development meets certain environmental standards and design standards, it can get more density. So it's, it's an option to try to encourage that type of development to occur. Another area of zoning that is very tricky is sign regulations. There are all sorts of aspects of sign regulations, types of signs that you allow, the area of signs, the height, how high they are above the street or the sidewalk, how far they're setback from the lot line, what kind of illumination you can use, whether it has, can be internal or external. The, this is an example of several different types of signs. This is, this is another shopping center, it's a shopping center in Rhode Island that has been converted to more of a pedestrian type of development. But you can see it's got a mix of awning signs, roof signs, projecting signs, you can't see it here, but there are wall signs, there's a, a real variety of things. And, and the point of this slide is, is that signs can be very attractive, lots of signs can be very attractive. It's just a matter of, of how they're, how they're placed and how they're regulated. This is another example, more closer to home, showing you a variety of signs, projecting sign, a wall sign, a hanging sign, a banner, an awning sign altogether. And they can, they can work, it's just that the, that the regulations have to be clear in how they're defined. And sign regulations can, can have, can often handle some very tricky questions like this, which is a, a sign nowhere near here, but somebody just took a, a ten-wheeler, whatever, and turned it on its nose and used that as a sign. In this case, some eyeglasses in a front yard. All of these types of things are defined as signs. These are, these fall within the definition of a sign, and the question is how does, how does the ordinance handle it? Sometimes it can be very easy and sometimes it can be very difficult. One of the things we've tried to do in the, we're, we're proposing in the current ordinance, which is different and we actually haven't seen it done anywhere else, is to actually create some sign districts. There's not really a logical connection between, oftentimes between a use district, business, residential, office, industrial and so forth, and the types of signs that should be allowed, because some areas are more highway-oriented, some areas are more pedestrian-oriented. So what we're proposing is a, is a set of six sign districts that would be generally based on, on use districts, but not, but could be more flexible than that over time. And so that's, that, that's an innovation in this current draft that is being proposed. We're also using many more tables to, to define what, what types of signs can be used in each area, what the area of the sign can be, the height and setback and illumination, so forth. A problematic area in Portsmouth is, is downtown parking and, and how the zoning handles that. The purpose, we have, we have a very specific zoning regulation that is very unusual, not seen in many other places. And its purpose was, was definitely needed, it was to promote shared parking in, in garages and to discourage individual lots, to basically encourage the walkability of the downtown and, and use, have parking be, be developed in a, in an efficient way and not have every lot develop its own parking. This, this regulation, this current system was adopted in 1997, which became the baseline for all the computations. And there, there's a variety of computations that are involved, it looks back to how many parking spaces there were in 1997 and what changes have occurred in the building since then, and whether the, the parking spaces are onsite or offsite, and whether they're in garages or, or in service lots. And you come, it's a very complicated process. And over time, over the last dozen years, it's become increasingly, increasingly, increasingly complex and very difficult to explain. And that's why I'm calling lack of transparency. And so over a number of years, there have been a number of suggestions for changes. The Economic Development Commission has been involved in those discussions. And we're now at the point of, of coming up with a recommendation, at least for a first phase of how to, how to change that. The objectives of, of these changes are to continue the flexibility that you currently have in the downtown, so that not every lot, every lot doesn't need to provide its own parking. And to continue to promote public and shared parking and to discourage service lots. But very important to simplify and update the, the regulations so we don't have to go through the, the long processes that we go through now and, and some inequities that there appear to be. I think over the long term, we want to separate the financing of parking from the permitting of development, but we're taking this one step at a time. So, so that's just a note for, for the future. And, and the, the downtown parking changes really have two aspects. The first one is modifying the parking requirements. And, and there's some, some changes, some significant changes here. One is to eliminate any parking requirements at all for any first-floor uses other than restaurants. And the reason for that is those are the uses that really promote the vitality of the downtown. The, the, the small cafes, restaurants, the small stores and shops that are on the first floor, those really promote the, the pedestrian nature. People come to the downtown park and go from one store to another. So those are the ones that probably, while, while they, they, there are definitely parking impacts, those are the ones that we, we clearly want to promote and that have most difficulty in coming up and meeting parking standards. The second thing is to standardize the parking requirements based on floor area. So for the upper-floor uses, we're suggesting that whether it's residential or office or retail, that they have the same parking ratio. We don't distinguish an office from a dwelling unit or something else. It's basically so that when use changes, because that's, that happens in the downtown all the time, use has changed from one to another. And we don't want to have to recalculate what the parking needs are. And then the, the third aspect of this is, once we've done all those calculations, we deduct the first four spaces. And basically, the reason for that is to, to again, promote the small uses. If you've got a very small commercial use, a small building or, or a two-family home even, that use doesn't need to provide its, well, I guess a two-family home would, but a very small, a very small commercial use would not have to provide any parking spaces if its, if its calculated need were less than four spaces. And the reason for that is we have this, the second aspect of the, the parking system, which is an opportunity to pay a fee to essentially satisfy your parking requirement. And so the second part of this, in addition to changing the parking regulations, is to modify, to update and simplify the, the in-loo fee system. And there are a couple of aspects to this. One is to completely eliminate the 1997 baseline system. We don't, the, the system of looking back to, to 12 or 15 years ago to see what parking was there, really has no relevance today anymore. So what we're talking now is about is just any increase in parking demand would fall into the system. The second part, since the first part of this slide, is that residential uses would be required to provide, new residential uses would be required to provide their parking onsite. Because those are the uses that really are, that people are here in the evenings and snow emergencies and so forth, and they have no other options. If the garage is full, for example, no place to go in a snow emergency. So it's important to, to make sure that those people are adequately provided for. And then the third piece is to increase the in-loo fee to represent about 40 to 50% of the actual cost of providing a parking space. And it's just, we have a sliding scale here. Right now, this, the fee is around $1,200. We're, we're proposing to increase that to $2,200 for the first 10 spaces, but keeping in mind that we're reducing the parking requirement. So depending on the property, this could be more or less than is required under the current regulations. So we have a, a variety of, of changes here. And we think this is going to be a step forward in making the parking system easier to understand and to implement. Another aspect of it is we're hoping to pull in the, the area that's subject to the, this, this regulation. Right now, this applies, the special parking regulations apply to the Central Business A and Central Business B districts, which are the areas shown in red on the slide, on the picture on the left here. And one of the issues there is that the Central Business B district goes down Islington Street a long way, and it's a, an area, it's, it's one lot, one lot deep from the street, and it's surrounded by very dense residential neighborhoods. So those are areas where there's a lot of parking congestion right now. So we've, we've found that the, the Central Business District regulations are, are being used in such a way that they actually intensify the congestion in those areas, and, because those areas are more distant from the parking, from the public parking facilities. So what is being proposed, in the short term anyway, is to, to look at the downtown overlay district, which is a more compact portion, it's, it's shown here as a, a dashed outline in that red, the Central Business District area. We're also talking about pulling the, the Central Business District back up Islington Street, as I'll talk about in a little bit. A big issue that has been, that started out separate from the overall zoning ordinance revision, but is now being considered as part of it as of last week, is a senior housing provision for the Office Research District, which is called Continuing Care Retirement Community Provision. And this came out of a proposal, a request for rezoning back in, about two and a half years ago, in 2007, for an area between Borthwick Avenue and Islington Street. And over time, that, as I mentioned earlier, the City Council refers all of those rezoning requests to the Planning Board. The Planning Board has been working to see how that, how the original proposal could be reshaped to be acceptable. And so it has come up with this, this concept of the Continuing Care Retirement Community Provision that would be allowed in certain portions of the Office Research District. The ordinance defines, and I, and I meant to say, when I say it started out separately, it's now, it's now combined with this. Last week, there was a public hearing, last week, or, yeah, last week, there was a public hearing on that separate piece. And at, at last week's meeting, the, the Planning Board voted to import that into the overall zoning ordinance revision. So that's why it's here. And this is the first time we've presented it together. The requirements are that it has to be in the Office Research District within a half-mile of a hospital, be on at least 35 acres on, on one or more lots, and at least have, have at least 100 feet of frontage on an existing public street. And this map gives you a sense of, of what that means. So the, the hospital is the, the pink right here on Borthwick Avenue, this is Borthwick, and Islington Street is down here. And these yellow parcels are parcels that are zoned Office Research. And you can see that the, the Office Research District really is concentrated in that half-mile radius around the hospital. There are some other areas further out that are also Office Research, but there's a pretty big cluster of those uses along Borthwick Avenue. And these, these parcels, if they were, sorry, if these were, if these were combined together in any way that would total up to 35 acres, they would be eligible for, under this ordinance. And this, this piece right here, sort of a, a U-shaped parcel, rectangular U, this is a group of parcels that are the, the subject of the, the proposal that was, that went to the City Council and that is called Borthwick Village. There is, there's this very specific proposal that's being considered right now. The ordinance has, it has density requirements. It's a mix of independent living, assisted living and skilled nursing units that is in a, in a continuing care retirement community. So there's a certain amount of land area, developable land area that would be required for each, each of those types of units. 40% of the land, of the developable area would have to be usable open space, and any area within 100 feet of a residential district would have to be vegetated buffer area. Buildings would be stepped back from the residential district, could be four-story buildings except within 150 feet of a residential district, and they would have to be three, no more than three stories in, in those areas. At least 50% of the building perimeters would have to be habitable space, so you couldn't have just parking garages on the first floor. And setbacks have to be 50 feet from a parcel boundary and 100 feet from a residential district. And these are the examples, these are not necessarily meant to illustrate the development that would occur, but these are types of buildings that would generally fall within the standards that we're, we're talking about in these regulations. This is one in Danvers, Massachusetts, and then a couple others in Massachusetts, Brookline and Watertown. and Watertown. Four-story buildings, sometimes with pitched roofs, sometimes with flat roofs. It's the kind of, the kind of scale development that you might consider if this were adopted. And this is the, this is actually the site plan, the concept plan for that Borthwick Village community, with Borthwick Avenue at that end, and then down below here, Islington Street is down in this area here. And this is the Hampton branch of the Boston Main Railroad. So, getting beyond text changes and specific provisions, another aspect that we'll be looking at are actual map changes. I mentioned earlier, changes on Islington Street. Right now, we have the Central Business District coming down to the park, and then down by Plaza Eight Hundred, we have a business district, and there's a mixed residential business district here. One of the, in addition to uses, one of the issues with the Central Business District is that it is, it has a very high, high building, allowable building height. So, you have, in this case, a sixty-foot height limit adjacent to a thirty-five-foot height limit. So, it's a, there's no sense of transition at all, and the uses are much more intensive. What we're proposing is to essentially extend the mixed residential business district all the way up to the area around Pearl Street, Pearl Street or Parker Street, that area, and that would be a forty-foot height limit. So, you'd have the, you'd have the thirty-five-foot height limit in the apartment district, and then in the spine, it'd be a forty-foot, and then the sixty-foot height limit would be confined really to the core of the downtown area. And that would really be, would help to limit the increases in congestion in those older neighborhoods. Another set of map changes has to do with the historic district. Right now, the historic district is focused on the downtown, the historic downtown area, and also a couple of corridors coming into the downtown, Islington Street and South Street. And I'll just close up, give you a close-up of this. Again, here's, this is Islington Street coming down here with the Brew Yard area, and South Street coming down to Lafayette Road, the Lafayette School down here, I'm sorry, Middle Street, and then South Street coming this way. There are really four types of changes that are happening, that are being proposed. One is an extension of the existing historic district on Islington Street from Dover and Union Streets here, down to Bartlett and Bartlett Street and Jewel Court here. So, that, basically pulling in another three blocks at the, at that corner of, that end of Islington Street. A second one is to extend it on Lafayette Road between Middle Street here and South Street here, so that section by the Lafayette School, one block or two blocks, depending which side of the street you're on. And then, there's a very small area of a couple of blocks up here by, I believe it's Deer Street and Bridge Street and so forth. A couple of lots up there that were excluded from the historic district a while ago, they would be included. And then, the other major change would be along this large spine of Middle Street. Right now, the district goes a specified distance back from the edge of the street, and so, what is being proposed by the Historic District Commission is to look at the lots that actually front on Middle Street and not, no matter what depth they are. So, in some cases, it may be difficult for you to see, but there are little green pieces here that are pieces of lots that are on back streets or side streets that would be taken out of the historic district. In other cases, there are pieces of lots that, larger lots that front on Middle Street that would be added to the historic district that are sort of a pink color. So, the idea is that if, just because the back portion of a lot might be within a hundred fifty feet of Middle Street, doesn't mean that that lot has to be included in the historic district. It's meant to basically address the uses that actually front on the street, which have the visual impact on the street. Another more arcane change in the zoning is looking at the, what's called the Office Research Mariners Village Overlay District. Out, this is Market Street Extension out here, and Portsmouth Boulevard and so forth. And this is an overlay district that was created when this whole Mariners Village development was, had gone through a lawsuit, and there was some bankruptcy, and there was a court order that set forth the city's responsibilities as far as redevelopment of that area is concerned. And most of the redevelopment has occurred. Some of it has become office development, some of it has become redeveloped residential development. And the sections in the zoning ordinance that apply to this are very long and very convoluted and refer to old lot numbers that don't exist anymore. So, it was, decision was made was to prune out anything that really didn't apply anymore and to make it much simpler. So, instead of having this Office Research Overlay District, Office Research Mariners Village Overlay District, we're proposing to divide it into its constituent pieces. So, there's an Office Research piece, that's been developed as Office Research, and there are a couple of residential districts that are being proposed. And then, there's a very small Osprey Landing Overlay District that really addresses the only remaining aspects of the court case that still apply, which have to do with renter versus owner housing and affordability. And then, there are other areas that we'll be looking at. One area is this area between the Route One Bypass, Cottage Street, Kate Street, Bartlett Street, and the railroad tracks. Again, it's one of these issues that has been proposed to the City Council for rezoning. The City Council has referred it to the Planning Board, and because we're going through this zoning process, rezoning process right now, we're going to be looking at that as one of our focus areas for some type of rezoning. We're not really sure what at this point. Currently, a large part of it is zoned industrial, but industrial uses, there aren't any industrial uses there, and it really doesn't seem to be the right zoning for the area, so we'll be looking at that. And we've had many other, much smaller rezoning requests that we've received during the past few years that we'll be looking at as well. And then, beyond this current, the current zoning process, we'll be continuing to look at other issues. There are some design standards that we want to look at for other parts of the city. There's some areas where we need to look at what things belong in the zoning ordinance versus what belong in other ordinances. For example, there are noise ordinances both in zoning and in general city ordinances, and we need to kind of reconcile those and figure out which goes where. And then, there are some other external regulations that we have to review. The P's Development Authority has its own zoning ordinance for the trade port, and the city zoning doesn't really apply there, so we need to, we need to figure out how we address that. And the FAA requires an airport approach overlay district, which regulates heights near the airport, so we also have to, we have to review that and look at that some more, too. And then, another big area we want to look at is the whole area of non-conforming lots throughout the city. There are many neighborhoods throughout the city where a majority of the lots just don't comply to zoning. We've got areas like Panaway Manor, Elwin Park, Maple Haven, some of these old neighborhoods that were developed under one set of zoning regulations. The zoning has changed, and any lot in here that is colored in is one that appears to be non-conforming to current regulations. So, that imposes a lot of burden on the homeowners and a big workload for the Board of Adjustment. So, we want to look at those areas and figure out what types of changes and eventual regulations would make sense. And we want to look at some of those, some other areas like Atlantic Heights, which is an older historic area, and see whether there are some different special regulations that should apply there that don't, that maybe provide more flexibility than in some other areas, as long as the historic character is preserved. The process for going through this is that the City Council has really three responsibilities that it needs to do in order to move this forward. One is to adopt the zoning ordinance. Another is to amend the Planning Board ordinance, because there are some aspects of the zoning ordinance that we're proposing to move into the Planning Board ordinance that don't really refer, that don't really affect zoning directly. And then, amend the Site Plan Review ordinance, because we're recommending that Site Plan Review apply to three- and four-unit dwellings. Right now, it only applies to residential uses with more than four units, and many of the issues that come up, come up with three- and four-unit dwellings. And then, the Planning Board, once the Council has adopted the zoning ordinance, the Planning Board needs to amend, adopt the new Site Plan Review regulations. The process from here, first of all, I should say that the draft land use regulations are, I mentioned this earlier, they're all on the city's website. You can go to the front page of the city's website, www.cityofportsmouth.com, and there'll be a link there to the regulations, or you can look at this full link, which is a slash planning and then another slash R O L U R, which is Revision of Land Use Regulations. Dot H T M. And at that site, you can download all of the regulations we've talked about today, and you can submit your comments online. It also gives you other ways to provide input. There are a couple more Planning Board hearings scheduled, August sixth and September tenth. Once the hearings are complete and we've received all the comments, we'll collate all the comments and present them to the Planning Board for discussion and review, and the Planning Board will make a recommendation to the City Council. It will likely not be the exact ordinance that you're reviewing right now because of all the comments that we receive, and we've already begun receiving comments. Those comments will be factored in, and there'll be some changes, and there'll be some corrections. I found a couple of typos already that we need to fix. Then, once the Planning Board has made its recommendation to the City Council, the City Council will have its own public hearings, and then take the ordinance under consideration and take action on it. So, that's, that is the conclusion of the presentation. I'll turn it back to the Chair.
Thank you, Rick, for that. Molly just moves the podium over. Just another reminder before we take public comment that the next public hearing on this revised zoning and revised site review is August sixth at seven o'clock. So, if people want to come up, we're taking any and all comments. If we could get your name and address for the record, we'll be taking notes of the comments made here. They'll be compiled, and after the August sixth, I believe the Planning Department's going to get together and review all these comments, so if we could get your name and address, please, and...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Board, Bernie Pilich, resident of Thaxter Road in Portsmouth. I am a practicing attorney and have an office in downtown Portsmouth. I'm here this evening on behalf of several motor vehicle dealers within the city of Portsmouth to discuss what we believe is a proposal in a zoning ordinance which would basically make twelve of the thirteen automobile dealerships in the city of Portsmouth non-conforming uses, and would probably make unavailable any additional land in the city of Portsmouth for automobile dealerships in the future. Under your proposal on page twenty-six, under Motor Vehicle Related Uses in the Use Chart, we have Motor Vehicle Related Uses eleven point one zero, which allows motor vehicle sales within the general business in the Gateway District. However, if you look at the supplemental regulations, the killer is ten point five nine two. Ten point five nine two puts automobile dealerships in the same category as adult bookstores, outdoor concert scenarios, food processing plants, truck fueling facilities, recycling plants, and other heavy industrial uses, and says you can't have one within five hundred feet of a residential district. I think we have thirteen in Portsmouth, either existing or vacant dealerships, and I think twelve of them are within five hundred feet of a residential district. What does that mean? That means anytime anybody wants to, any of these dealers wish to do anything on their site, they've got to go to the zoning board and get a variance because they're now expanding a non-conforming use. We would submit that something in the vicinity of two hundred feet, which the ordinance provides for veterinary hospitals, motor vehicle service stations, nightclubs, and bars is much more appropriate than the five hundred feet. All along Spalding Turnpike, all of those automobile dealerships, including the Saturn dealership, are within five hundred feet of a residential district. Going down the bypass, the Coast Pontiac Cadillac is within five hundred feet, the Suzuki garage is within five hundred feet, the Toyota garage is within five hundred feet, the Dodge garage is within five hundred feet, Mr. Bonneville's garage is within five hundred feet. The Portsmouth Used Car Supercenter is, on Lafayette Road, is within five hundred feet. I think the one that may not be is Mr. Bonneville's second dealership on the right-hand side in front of Walmart. The former Goss Lincoln Mercury is within five hundred feet. Even the old J Edwards Toyota site is, is within five hundred feet. I think that the ordinance should somehow reflect what currently exists. To take twelve out of thirteen automobile dealerships and make them non-conforming, I don't think recognizes what is actually out there. Likewise, the Waterfront Business District does not recognize what is out there. If you look at the Waterfront Business District, and this is my second comment, and I'm speaking as an individual taxpayer and not on behalf of any client, Waterfront Business District prohibits residential uses, yet probably more than fifty percent of the lots in the Waterfront Business District, as it is presently configured, are residential lots. Every time those people want to do anything, they need to come before the Zoning Board of Adjustment because they're non-conforming uses. There should be some provisions made in the Waterfront Business District to allow existing residential uses to be continued and expanded somewhat. In the old ordinance, there was a provision that they could be expanded by twenty-five percent. Now, they simply become non-conforming uses. There are areas where the only thing you can do in a Waterfront Business District is to have a school or a business, that these places are served by, Sagamore Grove Road, for instance, a fifteen-foot right-of-way, no parking whatsoever, yet the only thing you can legally do there is to put a commercial fishery or a boat landing. It makes no sense whatsoever. All of those houses in those lots are residential. Turning to the Gateway District, I thought there was one way more than, there was one more way into Portsmouth than Lafayette Road. If you're coming from the south, that's fine. What if you're coming down Woodbury Avenue? Why isn't that a Gateway District? It's same situation as Lafayette Road. It should be a Gateway District. Why does the Gateway District end at the Route One Bypass? It should go to the traffic circle. I mean, these are things that, you know, Rick's done a good job, and I'm not faulting Rick. One of the things is that zoning should incorporate common sense. It all should, also should reflect what is out there today. I've been through four, and I'm getting old, in forty years, I've been through four zoning amendments in the city of Portsmouth, beginning in seventy-seven, eighty-two, ninety-five, and now this one. In ninety-five, we made everything Office Research. Why? It was our quiet little way in Portsmouth of prohibiting residential growth and growth control, so that we didn't have to build any more schools. So, wherever we didn't want to have residential subdivisions, we made it Office Research, and we still have all this Office Research land that's sitting out there. Which leads me to my next comment. The Continuing Care Facility, if that is not spot zoning, I don't know what is. Why does it have to be within a half a mile of a hospital? You're required to have a skilled care nursing facility onsite. There are wonderful spots in the other Office Research Districts where a Continuing Care Facility could be incorporated. They don't need anywhere near thirty-five acres of land. They don't need to be within a half-mile of Portsmouth Hospital. The only reason those two inclusions are in there is to limit it to that one particular site, which is the proposal that's before the City Council. There's ten acres along Lafayette Road where Portsmouth Brewery tried to go. There was a proposal from an individual who wanted to put a Continuing Care Facility there, and the reaction from the Planning Department was, no way, no how, it will never go, even though the neighbors in Elwin Park would probably love it. It's about a mile and a half from Portsmouth Hospital. A Continuing Care Facility could fit there very well, yet we now have inflated the acreage to thirty-five acres. How many thirty-five-acre parcels do we have in Portsmouth? What a country. Maybe we'll make that a Continuing Care Facility, but it's not within a half a mile of the hospital. Let's be realistic and use common sense. Again, you don't need thirty-five acres for a Continuing Care Facility, and you don't need to be within a half a mile from the hospital. There are a lot of senior citizens, such as myself, who live further than a half a mile from the hospital, and we hope that Portsmouth Ambulance can get us there on time if we have to. So, with that, I'll conclude my remarks, but I would hope, and the automobile dealers will be here as a group on August sixth to further express their concerns about what they see as basically an attempt to prevent them from ever doing anything with their property in the future, or prevent any additional... property in the future or prevent any additional automobile dealerships within the city. So hopefully the board will look at that 500-foot setback. Automobile dealerships are not the type of use that an adult entertainment facility or a food processing plant or a truck terminal are. They are not that invasive. We've had the same 12 or 13 automobile dealerships here in the city of Portsmouth, and I don't recall that there have ever been any major problems with them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ralph DiBarnato, 1374 Islington Street. Thank you for serving and putting in the time that you do, and thank you for listening as you have in the past. I'm here on a subject that I've spoken on before, and I guess upfront, in order to make this appropriate, I'll say I'm here to speak against including the continuing care retirement community proposal in the, in the larger zoning ordinance. I find myself doing that after attending all but one meeting that I believe has been scheduled since a specific site proposal came up for the land between Islington and Bothwick Avenue. I personally am just not convinced that this serves the greater good that some people think that it does. I personally find it, the proposal, and I'm aware that I get caught in this, this is not site-specific. In order to comply with the right to speak before this board on this issue, I'm going to ask for the same privilege that the planner has used, and that is to use the Islington Street property as a reference, realizing that this is not site-specific. But the only way I can talk about it is to give you an example, and the example would be that piece of land between Islington and Bothwick Avenue. I frankly find the proposals that we've seen for that probably somewhat elitist. I don't see that they're going to provide any further workforce housing for the city by liberating property from people who would move into that project because the cost to move into that project is going to be from people whose property is worth a great deal more than workforce housing can afford to buy when it becomes available. That said, I'm particularly concerned about one provision. But before I get into that, I'd like to clarify to make sure I understand what happened last Thursday night. I believe the chair, Mr. Ritchie, explained that the zoning, this particular piece of paper was not site-specific, but a broader zoning definition that included other areas of the city beyond the parcel between Islington and Bothwick Avenue. Am I correct in that?
Yeah.
Is that, okay. Not being site-specific, the proposed change to the current zoning in that area does not require but a notification. Was that also a correct understanding?
For the application last Thursday?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Not being site-specific, this proposed change to the current zoning ordinance in the area does not require but a notification. Consequently, there was no but a notification, and that, I understand what you've said. The board then voted to add this section to the new zoning plan to be presented tonight for its first time at this public hearing. If the change is not site-specific and it doesn't benefit a specific developer, then I don't understand why Don Coker was advised to recuse himself. It's not specific. It's not specific to a certain site. It's a broader, it's a broader piece of paper. And I find that troubling. I'm very concerned that this situation can set a precedence that excludes numerous elected and appointed officials from deliberation in the future, and I think that really needs to be considered. So I'm, I'm going to leave that with you. I have it on the record, and, and I appreciate you allowing me to say that. My concern is the section that deals with right-of-way and access. In the draft, it's noted as 10.734.53, and it states, "At least two separate paths of travel shall be provided between the dwelling units and the public streets." I asked the former planner, David Holden, about requirements in the city for two accesses. He told me that at this time, there is no requirement for any development, no, no specific requirement that any development be required to have two accesses. It's not uncommon in this city to have a single access. Patriots Park, single access. Spinnaker Point, the former Ledgewood Manor, the Cedars, Spring Brook, the entire neighborhood of Panaway Manor. There is a condo development off Ocean Road, single entrance. Now, a number of these have secondary emergency entrances. Panaway Manor has a gate allowing access for the fire department by remote control onto the airport. Spinnaker Point has a gate that can be opened up and allow access into Osprey Landing. Apparently, in the past, a secondary access to be used in emergency was acceptable. Is this the beginning of requiring all development to have two accesses in the city? Or again, does it just, does it just relate to this specific piece of land? My concern is that if this stays included, that it nullifies the power of the Traffic and Safety Committee and the TAC Committee to make certain decisions that we have had them make in the past. This won't be open to discussion. The fact is, the lack of two public accesses could sink a development. If the Traffic and Safety Committee recommended to the city council that there is not a safe way to have a second access, for example, to the property on Islington Street, the whole, the whole project, which apparently is deemed valuable to the city, could flounder for the lack of two public accesses. I see no reason that it be written this rigid. If this section said, "Shall have one public access and at minimum, a second emergency access," awarded in some manner that gives the ability of other city boards to make decisions based on public safety, then I would find that acceptable. But it concerns me that after all the meetings we went to, including meetings that the developer that would like to develop that property invited neighbors to, stated time and again that they had no interest in a public access for Islington Street. Supportive documents to this. A handout from the developer explaining the difference between the office research use and this potential use. Two columns. If it were office research use, he would insist on two main points of access. If it's Bothwick Village, he only needs one point of access. This document, prepared by the planning department, dated August 10th, 2007. We've been at this for a long time, haven't we? It speaks to this very issue. It talks about doing impact traffic studies that weren't done. It, it mentions specifically, Attorney McNeil stated that the traffic has been a major concern on Islington Street. They compared traffic between office use and their proposed use. Mr. Coker wanted to confirm that there would be no access on Islington Street. Attorney McNeil indicated there would be emergency access to Islington Street, but would only be used for fire and police. There seemed to be a sudden reversal, at least as we see it, on the part of the board in developing the document that we have today, and we're very concerned that it requires two accesses and gives no wiggle room. I also am, I'm concerned that the lack of a complete board tonight and feel that I'm going to wind up giving the same speech next public hearing because, pardon me? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were. I guess I've said what I want to say tonight. I'll try to do a better presentation next time, but have I made myself clear that I really think you need to rethink and rewrite this section that requires unequivocally two public accesses? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is James Boyle. I'm the Toyota dealer on Greenleaf. As the Toyota dealer, I have the bragging rights of being the most environmentally friendly car dealer in the city. We have the hybrids and we do all kinds of recycling, and we have used lead practices in the construction of the new building. That being said, I don't want you to think that this is a negative comment about natural resources, because I'm very cognizant of natural resources. But when I noticed a couple of things in the presentation, when you're increasing the inland wetland, you know, when you're decreasing the size of it, you're then increasing buffer zones, and that would have a decrease in property value and, which obviously would have a net effect to the city of a decrease in tax revenue over time, once people woke up that their property was useless. That being said, I was involved in a lawsuit over a man-made ditch on my property, and there was a little overzealous enforcement, and luckily for me, the court found that we did everything by the book. And when I go back to by the book, there was one thing that Mr. Tainter, when he did his presentation earlier, was talking about natural resources. The most apparent thing in that presentation is the word "natural." So if it's natural things that are on your property, I think I fully understand protecting them. I ate tonight at Papagino's, my favorite Italian restaurant on Lafayette Road, and when I got out of the car, I noticed the man-made ditch in front of the restaurant was full of water and, because it had rained the last few days. So from what I read in this, you'd be several hundred feet away from that in the future, even though that was built, it's concrete, it's designed to hold, you know, take the stormwater and hold it and treat it and do all that stuff. The way I read this, you're not going to build anywhere near that, and all that stuff's protected. So I think Portsmouth is a pretty heavily developed small town in New Hampshire based, you know, compared to somewhere like Claremont or out in the wilderness. I think the city, the planning board, you know, in this, certainly in this proposal of changing the zoning ordinance, should adopt the state regulations and consider eliminating any city-level enforcement, and obviously you could reduce the position there and streamline the development process. That's all. Thank you.
My name is TJ Murphy, and I just purchased a piece of property on Islington Street, 1483, which abuts the much-discussed development proposal going on this evening and the zoning change that you're considering. And I just wanted to make a couple of points this evening. I don't know a lot about the project yet. I have looked at some of the documentation up in the planning department, and I've talked to my neighbors and have had just some insight on past meetings. So I, I have a little bit of an idea of what's proposed, and I've heard everyone's thoughts tonight, and they're valid, I believe. And I'm not against the project because by all means, I'd much rather see a development that is residential versus, you know, a office park or something back there, which I think would be a waste of space. So considering those topics, one thing I have in question is this whole spot zoning change. I'm not really sure as to why you don't consider the spot zoning. And in fact, a slide that Rick Tainter put up there today, I don't know if maybe you could help me out here, Rick. Do you have those slides still available up there? I see that, those graphics still going. If you could go back to that one that points out the circles that describe the 35 acres and what falls into a specific zone. I just wanted to be clear that I understood how that, how that worked out, because I think there's only one piece of property in the circle that meets the requirements. And if there's only one piece of property and, how do you consider that not spot zoning? I'm not, anyways, that's one of my points. It does certainly seem like spot zoning if, to the general person who just kind of looks at this project from a whole. And I understand that, you know, we have to grow and things have to be allowed to change, but I just want to understand that we've done research that describes why this is a good move, and have we done studies that support your, your stance? Have you done traffic studies that say that will be okay for Islington Street? Is there documentation that provides this to us so we can actually understand what the impact is on this property being developed? I'm not sure. I haven't seen anything yet. I mean, does the town plan on doing that? As a taxpayer and you represent us, I mean, have we done the, the proper homework that says, okay, what's this zoning change really mean? And what, what does, what do we have to back it up? So I haven't seen anything like that yet, but I'm hoping that we've, we're going to do something like that. But on this, these zones here, what properties fit the zoning change? I'm, I'm not clear. I didn't, it was a quick statement. I came in late and I apologize, but is that the only property that fits the zoning change?
No. Two minutes. Yeah, typically, we don't get enough, but I, I think that if you got the question, I think Rick can respond to it.
Well, the, the zoning says any, the site has to be at least 35 acres, which could be one or more properties.
Sure.
So the current one is, is, this is three parcels that together add up to 35. There could be a number of, you can see there's a number of parcels, and there could be a number of those parcels that you could group together to be 35 acres. So it's, it's not like, there is no, there is actually no parcel, no individual parcel out of this 35 acres. You have to assemble parcels to get 35 acres.
Mm-hmm.
So that's, it's, the answer is, this is not the only one, because this, this part, a part, there's no parcel that actually, by itself, meets that.
So in, in your circles here?
You could combine groups of parcels together to get through. You can actually see, looking, comparing that one that is kind of a U-shaped one, which combines several parcels together, you could actually envision other groups of parcels being combined together for the same, in the same way. So it's, it's not, it's, I would think that probably any of those yellow parcels could be, could conceivably be part of a 30, 35-acre site.
Okay. Well, thank you for answering that question. And my other, I guess, you know, my spot zoning argument, I just guess that I hope that everyone does the right due diligence or that the town does the proper studies to, traffic studies obviously are super important. Islington Street is busy. I live right on that corner, right where that, I'm not sure where the second entrance is going to be, if there is one. Don't know why there needs to be one, based on the arguments you've heard this evening, because there's numerous examples that say we can do it without two entrances. So I'm not sure if, why we all of a sudden need to make two entrances, but that's fine. But the studies that, you know, that's right on a corner, the road that I live on, on 1483 Islington, WBX Road, I'm sure, which will probably be a very viable option for the builder, because it already exists, and it would be very easy to make a second entrance there, but it's right on a very dangerous corner, and it's very, it's blind both ways, and that's a dangerous spot, I think, for a second entrance, and I would very much be against it. Not only that I butt that spot right there, so my property value actually will, probably would go down, if I have a two-lane road right next to my house, which is a concern of mine as well, but I'm also concerned that, you know, the traffic there will, it's dangerous, absolutely. And then my other point being is, you know, there's a lot of good spots in, in town, like in Portsmouth, where we could reuse buildings that already exist for senior housing. I'm not sure, like, perfect example, behind Store 24, there's a huge brick building that's empty. I mean, why do we have to take up 35 acres of a beautiful spot that's open to build housing that, you know, might be filled up slowly, and I know there's a need for it. My mom has been a senior housing social worker all my life, so I know all about the whole process and the need for it and the, the great thing. process and the need for it, and the, the great things that come from it, from building a community for people to actually grow old and have friends and places they can hang out. But, you know, do you really need 35 acres to build a big development like that? I don't think so. And, you know, we, this gentleman before was talking about lead construction and things like that. The whole point of trying to move towards, you know, being more conscious about using the environment properly is to build smaller. 35 acres is not small. And I, I know there's a lot of open space there and things like that, but, you know, I think we're wasting a lot of space there. And I think there's a lot of space available in town that's empty now. And you talked about that whole gateway on Route 1. I mean, there's a lot of empty spots there, and you talk about making it, you know, accessible and public walking around. Who's going to go down, halfway down Route 1 and walk around? It's, it is what it is. So we've got to think about, you know, what, what does that really serve right now? And that is a good spot. I agree, it's closer to downtown, so it's more viable for the argument, like, it could be really included into downtown. It is bikeable, walkable. But is it the best use of the space? I'm not really sure. I mean, there's a lot of spaces we could reuse buildings to possibly make housing that makes more sense, and it would cost less money. That's just my point. I know this is a, you know, it's a development, and people are trying to make money, and there's a need there, obviously, for senior housing, as we're growing older in our population. So I understand that. But I just want to make sure that the town has taken the right steps to do research that proves this is a good project. Because I'm not sure that, I haven't seen any research. Have you done traffic studies? Have we decided that this is the best zoning change? If we, if we change this zone this time, what's going to happen the next time? So I just want to make sure that it's a really well-thought-out plan before we move forward. And I guess I just pose to you as a challenge, you know, what type of research can you provide us that shows it's a good move? Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Rawling, 411 Middle Street, Portsmouth. I've taken a look and done a little homework on the table of dimensional standards and the determination of the lot area per dwelling units and the number of permitted legal residences in the, on the property. I've pasted up a little chart here that I'll hand out to you. I hope make it a little clearer that I'll use this. I've used mixed residential office and business districts, just because it's a little more flexible, and though it may apply to other districts, too. On the left is just the current requirements, which, for approved single residents, would require 7,500 square feet. Forty percent building coverage would allow you a 3,000-square-foot building footprint. Twenty-five percent open space area would give you 1,875 square feet of open space. So that's the standard as it's written. So then I just did an application to a hypothetical 20,000-square-foot lot. See, what does that give me? According to these requirements, the 7,500 square feet divided into the 20,000 gives you three legal units on that property. Forty percent lot coverage would give you an 8,000-square-foot buildout. Twenty-five percent open space would give you 5,000 square feet. Going by the structure height limits, you had the potential, or the 40-foot height gives you the potential of a four-foot floor buildout of approximately 32,000 square feet. If you divided that by the three legal units, it would be 10,666 square feet per unit. This application tends to give you large units, low density, and a minimal open space. There's lots of areas that that may be appropriate zoning, but in other areas, perhaps, it may be more contextual if we had a higher density of units in the area and perhaps some more open space. So for, again, for a hypothetical study, I took the allowable 3,000 square feet from the left-hand column for a single unit, divided it into the 20,000-square-foot lot, and came up with, well, let's see, no, I did, I doubled it. I took six units, divided it into the 20,000-square-foot lot, and it gave me 3,333.3333 square feet of property, which would be a lot area per dwelling unit. What I did do in this modification, though, is I held the 3,000-square-foot of building coverage on that lot, which was the same building coverage for the 7,500-square-foot lot. That gave me a building coverage on the lot of 15,000 square feet. Open space area of 85,000 square feet, or 85% of the lot, excuse me, and 17,000 square feet of open space. Now, the 3,000 square feet times four floors, which would be the potential buildout, would give me 12,000 square feet. Divided by six units would give me 2,000 square feet a unit, which is a pretty big workable footprint. This type of development would give us a lot more compact development, lead to greater affordability, better property usage, greater density, and more open space development in the city. So I encourage you just to take a look at creating greater density allowances in here for the, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Margot Doring, 404 Islington Street. Based on my address, you might know that I'm in and around the area that's currently zoned as apartment. I have not seen a copy of the new zoning map to know if there's going to be any changes made to the boundaries or inclusion of that district. So I just wanted to put out a few concerns that I have seen just being a neighbor of that district. There's a high amount of non-conforming units with a lot of dwellings inside these buildings with very little parking, and that pushes a lot of the parking onto the streets, which of course is an issue during the wintertime. And I wondered if there had been given any consideration to ways, as we move forward, to alter the zoning so that maybe some of that can be fixed over time. One of the things that I notice is the definition of family. I, I understand this goes into the issue of dwellings and, and apartments, although I see no specific definition for apartment in, in this current version. But it's my understanding that you can have up to five unrelated people in a dwelling which provides sanitation and sleeping and all of that. So some of the buildings in the apartment zone are old single dual or single-family homes where not a lot of conversion has been done, so there are a lot of people unrelated living together. So you get five young people who are renting, and at least four or five of them have cars. And a lot of these buildings never had and don't have enough parking for that many people. And that's putting a lot of strain on the neighborhood. There's also, when you have a high density of apartment, converted apartment building, one after the other after the other, where there isn't the owner resident, the care of the building sometimes reflects that. And when you have a large number of those on a street, and it's all packed into one area, as you have it right now, that puts a lot of pressure on that one area. So I'm wondering if it's been considered that maybe some other areas of the town here and there might be opened up as other pockets for apartments, as opposed to having everything? My memory of the zoning map is that it's pretty much condensed into this one area, bounded by Islington, Middle, and I guess it goes out maybe as far as Dover, Cass. So that was my major question or concern that I wanted to raise regarding the apartment district, just because I live there, I walk through there all the time, I see what happens in the wintertime. And I haven't figured out yet if my bed and breakfast is now potentially needing special exemption later on in life, but I'll have to take a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other body in the public wish to speak? Okay. Close the public comment session then. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I think your thoughts are well-thought-out. We're going to be taking all the comments down, incorporating everything that, or taking everything that was presented to us tonight. Just as a reminder, August 6, 2009, at 7 o'clock will be the next public hearing on this. Again, the address was on cityofportsmith.com, if you want to log on to review any of this information. Rick, did I miss anything?
No, just that when you go to that site, we, you can download all of the zoning regulations. And I guess one other thing we haven't actually specifically talked about tonight, it's not a public hearing, but we are scheduling a work session with the Planning Board to discuss possible zoning map changes at the board's regular meeting, which I believe is August 20th.
Correct.
And so that would be 7 to 8 o'clock. We'll be, we, I mentioned earlier that we've been collecting a number of recommendations for zoning changes over several years. And we'll be looking at some of the major ones that I pointed out earlier this evening, but also looking at some of, some individual ones, to the extent we can get into those. And the, the intent would be that when we bring the, the revised zoning ordinance to council, we would also be bringing revised zoning maps, so the questions about specific zoning districts are pertinent for that. And we'll take all those into consideration.
Any comments from the board before we call for adjournment?
Just have one.
Oh, Ms. Hayden?
Which is that the public should know that even though all board members aren't here tonight, they will get all of the minutes and all of the info that was given as input tonight will be shared with them, and they do read that information.
We do. So with that, do I have a call for adjournment?
Someone?
Seconded. Good night. Thank you.